Good evening, everyone. I need a motion for us to come out of closed session, please.
So moved.
Say it.
All right, all in favor, show indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Bowden House will do a presentation on CTE, Local Plan.
I can do it without the PowerPoint, just four slides, so I can discuss it with you. You were sent by email the local plan on May the 10th, and the local plan is what the DPI requires for us to receive our $500,000 in state and federal funding. And the CTE's focus is going to be on increasing the teacher's knowledge of their content area, so that, you know, if a teacher really knows their content area and they're changing blueprint, then they should be able to facilitate that information better to their students. And we're going to have workshops, we've already got the first round scheduled, to where we can take the highest performing teacher in, you know, say Ag, and take one of the objectives and disseminate and break it down by objective and use the blueprint. Because sometimes a teacher is really good, but then as the content area changes and DPI changes the information in that course, the teacher doesn't change with it. So that's what's going to be our focus for next year. And then we're also going to be working to work better with our non-traditional students, to encourage, you know, males in the health science, or in the family consumer science, or encouraging females in our automotive and our technology areas. Because that's one area where we are equal to the state, but we really are a low percentage. And we want to encourage all of our students. And because the board that went to our CTE celebration, you saw the males that were making incredible garments. And so we don't want it to be that any child thinks, well, I can't do this because of any factor, their race, their sex, that they're interested in an area, that they should, you know, seek that. And, you know, basically, we are working with those program area meetings to increase our proficiency. So do we have any questions? And if, you know, if any of you want to sit down, if you've got an area that you've read the local plan and you want to sit with me, we can, you know, we can talk further.
Thank you very much. Are there, is there any discussion? Is this something that we need to vote on?
Yes, ma'am.
It's on your agenda at 4:00 E.
Okay, I see it. Are there any questions?
Now, what areas did you say you wanted to concentrate on?
Every different area, agriculture, facts. Our lowest performing proficiency is Ag. And so we have that meeting as first, because all except one of our high school Ag teachers are 12 months. So we're having that in June. And we're going to continue those, and it'll be after school, but the ones during the summer for the Ag will be during the school day.
Okay, and I thought, I heard you say something about health services?
Health sciences, getting males more in the nursing program. Because, you know, like we, our focus is to make sure that every child knows that every program area is available to them.
And we'll be maintaining all of those programs that we approved for the local, the health sciences and all of them.
Mrs. Bowden House, what, what efforts are underway to make accessible all the programs to whatever students desire? Because as you say, all of the high schools don't have an Ag program, and you may have a student at a high school that does not have an Ag program. I use my daughter, for instance, she, she's an animal science major now in college, but she went to Goldsboro High School, and they didn't have an FFA. So what efforts are underway to, to try to address that?
We have the programs, you know, we have our articulation agreement with Wayne Community. And so this, so that every program is available, you know, automotive, that Spring Creek and Goldsboro do not have automotive, but they have the capabilities of going to one of the top three in the state, Wayne Community College, or Community College automotive programs, and, you know, sanctioned nationally. So we have that, you know, agreement. Now, of course, Goldsboro has transportation to and from Wayne Community, making it even more accessible, whereas Spring Creek, you know, transportation is, is an issue. And then the Diesel Academy, the classes, they start at Southern Wayne, but any child can go to Johnston Community and take the Diesel. So we're, we're trying to ensure that no matter what program we have, if we don't have it and can't afford it, then they have access to it at a community college. And just like our nursing fundamentals, you know, we had added an ad, we added a second health science teacher at Eastern Wayne High School when the drafting program didn't sustain. So we have a Wayne Community College instructor that goes to Eastern Wayne and still teaches one section of drafting, because that's the small number they had interested, but yet we have more students that are able to go through the nursing program, the health sciences program, and then when they get ready to take the nursing fundamentals, they go to Wayne Community and take that. And we're also working on having those nursing fundamental classes taught at the high school campuses.
Excellent.
Do we have a drafting program at Goldsboro High School?
We do not, but the current, or the new manufacturing class, we have the computers that have already been ordered, and they've been delivered, and they will have drafting as a part of that manufacturing curriculum.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. And you had a very successful program awarding the students for the work that they've done this past school year, as well as with teachers.
Well, thank you for coming.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2018, 2019.
We have to do it in, yes. Under, Board Action. Board Action.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll come back to that. And now we have a presentation by Dr. Harold, Capital Projects Determining Factors.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Dunsmore. Just to give you a little bit of background on Item C, Item C is something that I was asked to develop by the Facilities Committee in our committee meetings this year. One of the things that has been brought up as a topic in our meetings is having a better way to identify items as to how we place them on our Small Projects list, and how we determine if a project is a large capital project, or if it's a small project item, as well as in our climate that we're working with, the school security looking at how we prioritize the items that are on the list once they're upon the list. So this is a draft item that has been brought to you, just for your edification, be able to look at that, potentially ask questions. As I did research on how the state of North Carolina determines what a capital project or a large capital project is, the state really does not set a dollar amount for what to consider a large versus a small project. The state does have three factors they look at, and this comes from the General Assembly, Article 8, their budget and capital improvement project document. They look at repairs and renovations to facilities, the purchase of real property, as well as new construction, or to rehabilitate a facility. So rehabilitate, obviously, that term would be just like a person, if you want to bring the facility back to what it was when it was originally constructed. That would be rehabilitation, not a renovation. So we took that, or I did, and also went to some other existing bullet points that we discussed as well in Wayne County, that we will look at new construction, expansion, renovation, and we looked at putting a dollar amount of $50,000 to say, this item is a small project, or potentially becomes a large project item. Now, that dollar amount is a guideline. It does not mean that an item cannot be paid for out of the small project list, but it does mean that this is a threshold that we would look at and say, once we hit this number, we're looking at a large capital investment versus something we can do on the small project list. As well as, we look at purchasing major equipment, sometimes I know in career and technical education, you may purchase a large piece of equipment that could be arranged of that dollar amount, as well as major maintenance or rehabilitation, and it gives a lifespan of around 10 years, a useful lifespan there. So also looking at prioritizing small project items, this was also asked to be developed. So we looked at, number one, being health and safety considerations for our students and staff when the items are placed upon the list, as well as preservation or preventing additional damage and expense to the school system. So looking at those items that need to be repaired, because if they are not repaired, they will incur further additional costs to our system. Also, three is educational impact to students and staff, and then the last one would be value added. So there may be some things that are put upon the list, or asked to be put upon the list, that may be nice, they may help our schools to look better, or improve the overall feel, but they may not address health, safety, a direct impact to the educational classroom itself. Now, one of the things that the facility, or the facility team, or, excuse me, committee had a concern about was items that are potentially added to the list that may not be completed, or they may be taken off the list at some point in time. So one of the statements at the bottom that was asked to be added, and I'll read that, is when an item is approved and added to the small project list, it will remain on the list until completed, and this includes the next fiscal year, or recommended to be removed by Facilities Committee to the full board for their approval. One of the things that I have asked and mentioned to the committee that I would like to do in my role is I would like to visit all of our campuses and do an inventory of our campuses and assessment of our schools as we approve this list for 1819 school year, and think systems perspective as to what our needs are. We all can look at our schools, but then kind of prioritize what are our individual building needs, as well as looking at the systems perspective as to what we need overall with the funds that we have. So this comes to you not in the form of a motion, it comes to you just as a presentation for your, your information. It was suggested in the Facilities Committee that it be moved forward to policy, for them to consider maybe looking at that as a board policy. So that, I believe, is our next step, is to move forward to the Policy Committee. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions, but appreciate Dr. Harold's efforts in this. As Chairman of the Facilities Committee, we feel like that in the capital projects, each year, the administration asks the individual schools, you know, things that they need, and the individual schools are obviously looking at it for their, for their school. But what Dr. Harold is suggesting, and him going to all of the campuses, is to, is to take a look at it in the whole, rather than just the individual schools, and have a order of priority. Obviously, if we have one school, and they would like to have some new carpet in their entrance, that's a creditable need, but then we may have another school where the leak, roof is leaking in their entrance. So Dr. Harold can make that determination about which is the more pressing need. And obviously, when you have repairs and things like that, some things fall out of the air that are major repairs, and it takes, and what happened in the past is some of the things that were on there as projects were not done or not completed, because they had other things that fell out of the air that were required to be done with the funding that they had. So, and an effort for the board to get a better handle on projects, so that when we decide on a small project as a board, whatever that project is, and we go out into community and we tell the community that that project has been approved and funded, then we can look forward to that actually happening sometime in the next year, too, as time permits. Did I say that okay, Dr. Harold?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that's the purpose of this conversation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Are there any questions or any other discussion points?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to first thank Dr. Harold for giving us these guidelines by which to go with. I think it gives us, as a board, a better understanding of what the school system really needs, and it also gives us an opportunity to give some assurances to some of our principals and stuff, that whenever they make a request for an item to be done, at some point in time, in, in the near future, that that action would take place. We have noticed that there have been several items that have continually come on books year after year, it's basically the same item. And so what we wanted to do was try to figure out a way which we could eliminate that from occurring again. So I applaud you for your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Dr. Harold, I would like to thank you, and I'd like to also thank the Facilities Committee, and at this point, I'll make Mr. Flowers, Mr. Henderson. Mrs. Strickland is not here this evening because she is ill, but I'm very happy that they are happy, so that we can move forward on this issue. And I do think it's going to be very beneficial to us, even beginning next year, yes.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I would also like to say that we are giving this a month time for the board members to actually look over it, study it, think about it, and then possibly at the next board meeting, we will be bringing it forward for some type of vote.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
When this goes, if this goes forward to policy, or when it comes back up to the board, you should also keep in mind that this, this is, this definition of capital projects from the budget is different from the definition of capital outlay.
Okay.
That's in the public school laws. So this would not include things like fixtures, furnishings, equipment, yellow buses, activity buses, and those sorts of things, that you also have to purchase out of capital outlay money.
Okay.
So you may or may not want to consider expanding this definition to include those things.
Okay. All right, thank you. Dr. Harold?
Thank you, Madam.
Mr. Hayes, Mr. Michael Hayes, Small Project Updates.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The, before you is the Small Capital Projects update that we presented to the Facilities Group at the last meeting, and we're bringing it before you to just show you where we are with the monies that we had for this fiscal year. The first page, you'll see 2.7 million is what we had available, 2 million in new appropriations, and 700,000 carried over from the previous year. Of that 2.7, most of the projects that are on the list have been completed. It looks like we will spend 2,020,000 by June 30th of this year. So of the 2.7, we would have spent over 2 million dollars. We're carrying forward to 1819, another 417,000, and the net uncommitted amount that we'll carry over into the year is 263,000 dollars. So we'll get our appropriation for this upcoming year, and we'll have that amount plus 263 to utilize in our projects for 1819. If you look on pages two through four, I won't go through the detail, but you'll have a list of the projects that we carried over from last year and completed, everything that we've completed this year, the items that are being moved into next year, the 417,000, and then the items that were removed from the list for this year. So I'll pause and see if there are any specific questions.
The 417 dollars.
417,000.
417,000 dollars is allocated already, and they will be completed next year?
They are moving into next year, yes.
Okay, all right.
But, but it doesn't necessarily mean that all of those might be completed next year.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll be evaluated as Dr. Harold goes through his list of looking, looking at those items, and so, but they will be initially carried into next year.
In Facilities Committee, thank you for bringing us this up-to-date information. But in Facilities Committee, he gave us a complete breakdown of individual projects and to justify these numbers. And some of the projects that were done and completed were not some of the things that were on the list, because as I said, some things fell out of, I think there was a chiller in one school that was real pricey.
There was a chiller that was bad, there was a roof that had to be replaced at one of the schools.
Yeah, and it was, it was real pricey, I don't remember the numbers, but, so, this, this fund is a moving target, because it just kind of has to be, and that's why I have recommended that we take some of these monies of the 2 million dollars that the county gives us each year for small capital projects, and just entitle it a contingency fund, so that we would have some money for things to fall out of. It's just a method of bookkeeping, but it seemed like it would, it would, because the way it is now, Mr. Hayes, he has to submit, and correct me where I'm wrong now, but he has to submit to the county an entire budget, budgeting this money. But obviously, some things don't get done, because some things have to be done immediately. So it's a moving target and complicated, but we've tried to get a clear handle on it. Thank you for, Mr. Hayes, for helping us with that.
Question.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Mr. Hayes, I noticed on page, what is this page? Page two of your report, where it talks about front, replacing the lockers in the PE room for dill, it seems like that actually has been on the list for two to three years now?
Mm-hmm.
And it does not appear as though that that, that number has been carried over into your 417.
It will be completed this year.
That will be completed, so that should be added to the 417.
No, it's going to be done.
By the end of this year?
Yes, it'll be done before we leave, June 30th.
Okay. And then I did notice also that in your 2018, 2019, there were several items that I would question as to whether or not they should be listed as a capital outlay project, and you can clarify it for me. One being a water cooler at Goldsboro High School?
The 1819 is the items that Dr. Harold is going to go through and put together a list of those things that we'll end up showing. So, you know, that was on the initial list from the principals, and I think part of what he'll do is go through and look and make those adjustments. So that may well fall off of 2018, 19, next year's list of items.
Okay. But I would ask him to pay close attention to some of those items, such as a water cooler, a eyewash station, seemed like to me that would come out of another budget that I, budgeted somewhere, but I do have some concerns about that. But I would ask that, since the board is actually looking at the, the recommendation that Dr. Harold just made regarding our, how we prioritize and things, that Dr. Harold would come back to us, taking that into consideration as he presents this next one.
I have a question. Goldsboro High School, the window repairs, would that include the Wayne School of Engineering's facility there on the campus?
I am not, I'm not sure what all is included in there. I believe they took a look to see which of those windows were bad, and so there may well be some that's on the Wayne School of Engineering side. I just don't know specifically which group of windows that have been looked at that's included in this particular estimate.
It was primarily the wood-framed windows where the window units, the air conditioners are rotting and wore down.
Okay. And is there a, is there going to be a need or a placement on this schedule for next year to do the windows on that campus?
I, I think we're going to need to wait and see what those costs are, to see where that's going to fall.
Okay, all right.
I would also like the board to know that the Facilities Committee did also look at this. One of the things, from what I'm reading today, we asked that be changed, and that was the electrical outlets at Mount Olive Middle School. We requested that, that item not be removed from the list, and that we do further investigation on what costs would be associated with redoing those electricals.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Mr. Hayes, at one point, there was a line item, or a budget, or a separate pot of money, I'm not exactly sure, that was earmarked for safety and security. Has, has that been merged? You probably, it may have been before your time, and you're shaking your head like, yeah, it was before my time.
I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with.
Okay, well, at one time, there was a separate budget, and I'm, and I'm kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Henderson was talking about there, when he, when he used the example of the eyewash, eyewash station, for instance. Eyewash stations are absolutely critical when you're talking about safety. They are, they are a requirement, the, you can, you can get fined heavily for not having them. And so it is, it is, at one time, there was a separate department and a separate budget that was specifically for that purpose. So the reason that it's coming out of this fund is what you're saying, is that there is no separate budget for it?
The reason it was initially identified is, I don't remember even specifically which school did it, but when we asked them about their needs, that came back as part of the requests that they were making. And so, you know, I assume it did not go in as a maintenance item or anything else. And so that's how it ended up showing up on the list, because we didn't go through and delete anything that they had specifically asked for. We were going to go through and, you know, try to look at priorities and just figure out what should be on the list. So it may well have fallen off once everything was looked at and completed.
And I guess, as a follow-up, i- is there any discussion from the Facilities Committee or any other with regard to re-establishing some type of separate budget for? Because you talked about receptacles, eyewash stations, those are, those are all safety, those are all safety items. And if you're questioning whether or not it should be coming out of this pot of money, then are you saying we should have a separate pot? And so.
What?
Yeah, we have had it.
Was, see, I was looking at that more as a curriculum type of issue, so I thought it might be covered through a curriculum type of cost, because it is associated with a class chemistry, I would imagine, right?
Yes. Any lab classes.
It's a safety requirement.
It is a safety.
OSHA will eat us up without eyewash stations.
In the past, we've had, we've had things like that, fire extinguishers, any of your, your eyewash stations, your bloodborne pathogen kits, some rubber gloves, different things of that nature, that were all included in a safety budget. I mean, and the list goes on and on, as far as that goes, because I can think of another dozen things. But we, we certainly need to take a look at that and see how it might have been implemented and put it back in, I would say. Because there's no, it's like he said, we, we had, when OSHA gives you an abatement time, you've got so much time to get those items fixed if you have an inspection. And you can call for a voluntary inspection, and they give you so much time to do it, but if they come in and find that it's receptacle- But if they come in and find that there's receptacles that are undone or cords going across the floor without a, without a rug on them like that or something to cover them up, some of those fines can be eight, seven, eight thousand dollars, please. An i-wash station is one of them. And I think we need to be very proactive when it comes to issues like that because those are avoidable things that we, we can, we can plan.
Okay, the, thank you very much, Mr. Hayes. The Meadow Lane Elementary Project update, Mr. Harrell?
Yes ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to give you information on Meadow Lane. We are moving along as scheduled. You should have three documents, I believe, in your files. You'll have a document that has some writing on it, which are basically minutes from our last construction meeting. We do have a construction meeting monthly on-site with our architect and our contracting company. You also have the latest two aerial photographs of Meadow Lane that was taken May seventeenth. So we are currently moving to have a roof on our building completely by the end of this month. That is our goal if the weather holds out. The project on a percentage-wise is about forty percent complete now. They are continuing with the construction of the concrete masonry unit walls on the wing that is closest to Meadow Lane Elementary School. As you're aware, that, that wing is a little bit behind because, of course, the footprints of the two buildings overlap. So we had to wait before a mobile unit was installed to have those students relocated so we could take that unit down, that addition down to Meadow Lane Elementary School. The current handover date for us right now is looking at November. We're looking at Thanksgiving when the building will be completed and handed over to us. Keep in mind that Quadrant will be with us through the end of May of two thousand and nineteen and next year because as soon as we take ownership of the new building, they will begin the demolition of the old building and the site prep and finish work for the parking lot on that side as well as the entrance and driveway. We did also approve two of the change orders for this month. We are under budget, which is good. We are currently about six hundred thousand dollars under budget, which is excellent. We approved the change order for laminated glass and the safety vestibule was nominal expense, about thirty-five hundred dollars. The glass cannot be shattered or knocked out. So it can be shattered, but you cannot knock it out of the frame. So that was a, really a common sense and our safety concerns to have that added to the safety vestibule of that school, that if we do have an intruder, that person can be locked in and cannot get out or get to our children. We also have approved our terrazzo to be done. We are still under budget. We felt that terrazzo was a, it was something that needed to be done. The life with the terrazzo, as you have seen in our other schools, will outlast the building in many places. So that's approved. The rough costment there was roughly about three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Again, we are under our budget. As I talked with the architect, we'd like to make sure that we have a little bit of funds left over because as we continue to take down the old building, you never know what you might get into when it comes to removing fuel tanks, things like that. So we're excited. We have made two visits to Richlands in Onzeau County. Their superintendent, Mr. Stout, has been, or Dr. Stout has been wonderful letting us come and look at the building. The building is beautiful. I think our teachers and our children will truly enjoy it. So again, we are on schedule and everything is looking great. I would invite you to come with me if you'd like to, one day to go out and take a look at the building. If you'd like to walk through it, it really looks great. Happy to entertain any, any questions if you have any.
Dr. Harrell, I believe the completion date is Thanksgiving?
Yes, sir. The, the current completion date was October. But as you know, in January, we had those days that were nine, ten degrees. And of course, you cannot lay block when it's freezing. So that weather put them behind. They, they have worked really hard, Quadrant has, and they've made it several of those days. But right now, we're looking at November, yes, sir, Thanksgiving. And that, of course, would allow us the opportunity over our break to get everything moved into the new school and get the old school abated out and then be able to take it down. We've also approved our furniture vendors, and we've been working through that process since December. So we're, we're ahead of schedule on furniture. Our furniture vendors have been designing 3D designs of the building. It's amazing what technology does in two thousand and eighteen. So we're excited. I'm excited.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna make an adjustment in our schedule and we're gonna move to our spotlights. I'm gonna begin this process. CTE Teachers of the Year. Would Grantham Middle Agriculture Education Instructor Randy Evans, Wayne School of Engineering Drafting Teacher Julie Heath, their families and principals, please come forward? Yes. Well, we thought we did because we had some people that needed to leave early. Do we have everyone here? Because we were moving for, oh, okay. We do. Alright, what about your principals and family members? Oh, this is only one. Okay, this is a couple.
CJ.
Alright.
See if any of those are.
Okay, so, yes, we're gonna make another adjustment.
Okay.
And go to public comments, Mr. Smith?
Wayne County Board of Education requests to appear before the board. The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. If you wish to appear before the board, please review the following procedures. Appearance request forms are available to the public at the receptionist desk in the lobby thirty minutes prior to the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak must place their appearance request form along with any handouts in the basket located at the receptionist's desk in the lobby. The basket will be collected at five P.M., and only those who have an appearance request form in the basket will be allowed to speak. Public comments are scheduled to take place at five thirty P.M. Presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The chairman shall call time on any presentation which exceeds a three-minute time limit. Organizations or groups wishing to speak about a particular topic may be asked to reduce the time if each individual or to use a spokesperson to share comments on behalf of the organizational group. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. No presentation shall include any complaint, criticism, or negative comments regarding the conduct or performance of identified school personnel. No presentation shall include information about a particular student which is privileged and confidential under the state and federal privacy laws. The first speaker is Mr. Barry Merrill, four-three-two Club Nose Road, Club Nose Road, Dudley, North Carolina, and he wishes to speak about the Southern Wayne High School gym and classrooms.
Thank you. I've, I've got some written-out comments, but I'm not gonna read them, and I, I hope I can stay within three minutes. I wanna thank the board for their progress that you have make, have made and continue to make in working to build a strong relationship with the Wayne County Commissioners. That's been a problem for many, many years. And, and Dr. Dunsmore, I know, has been meeting regularly with the county manager, our new county manager, as well as Mr. Wood, and, and we've made some real progress. I was excited to hear that, that this board was addressing the need to build a second gym at, at Southern Wayne High School. And, and I appreciate the continuing emphasis to, to fulfill that promise that was made nearly twenty years ago to, to provide a second gym there as they did at Acock and Rosewood. And I'm a little bit disappointed that, that it seemed that we won't have all the money available to do what needs to be done in terms of addressing both the gym and the classrooms. But I've, as, as I've, I've talked with several people over the weekend, I think there's some answers coming. And in fact, I think you're gonna hear some answers from one of the other speakers tonight. But again, thank you for, for making good on that promise that was made a long time ago. And again, I think you're concerned not only for, for providing the athletic facilities that our fine athlete, fine high school athletes need and deserve, but also the classroom needs at, at that campus. And again, I know there's a, there's commitment on the part of, of Dr. Dunsmore and, and county commissioners to, to try to address those classroom needs that have been there for a long time. And, but again, thank you for your help and, and continue to work in that area.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Nan Hatcher, Registered Nurse, eight forty North Church Street, Mount Olive. And she wishes to speak on behalf of students of Health Science and Education classes at Southern Wayne High School. And her topic is request to continue offering nurses aid training at our high school campus.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I come representing the students from Southern Wayne. I'm very passionate about it, so I'll try not to start crying. I started this program at Southern Wayne seventeen years ago, so it's really close to my heart. My students are economically challenged. They can't afford to go to Wayne Community College to take a class. They can't afford to take an evening class. They work. I have students right now that work three jobs and go to school full-time in high school. I have students that work two jobs. I have students that are responsible to raise their little kids, their brothers and sisters. And this program is a lifeline for them because they can get their certification and they can go to work. And they don't have to work three jobs anymore. They don't have to work two jobs anymore. We train them during school hours. That's what they need. We need to remember that the numbers are fine, but we have students that depend on us and they need us. And so I'm here because my students asked me to come here. And I told them I would come today and talk to you all about this because they're very upset. They don't want that program taken away from Southern Wayne. They want to be able to get their certification during school hours, and that helps them. And so that's why I'm here pleading to you, please, when you're considering taking it away and taking it to Wayne and getting the numbers up in the classroom, please think about the students and what they're going through economically. Some of my students, they, they ride with other people to get to school. They ride with other people to get to clinicals. They don't have cars. They don't have families that can buy them vehicles and pay things for them. They need our help. And this helps them. I've been doing this seventeen years. And I can tell you, I've seen all the way. I've seen it where students have their car, but I see more of the ones that don't, and they need our help. And so if you'll just please think about that when you're talking about taking this program away from the high school level. It's a good program. We have a good passing rate, and the kids get to go out there and work. And I have girls and boys, not just girls, and I have gentlemen too. I have a young man in my class right now taking the class. So please, if you'll just think about that, leaving it at the high school in the daytime when they can get access to it. Thank you so much for listening to me, and let me present.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. Joe Scott, one sixteen James Street, Mount Olive, the mayor of Mount Olive. And he wishes to speak on representing the citizens of Mount Olive and Southern Wayne High School.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Dr. Dunsmore, Board of Education. Greetings comes from the legislator, Mr. Jimmy Dixon, this afternoon. At four o'clock, I was calling him on another matter, and he says, would you do me a favor? Will you take to the Board of Education what Representative Bell and I have been working on? And you have before you the low-well supplemental funding for Wayne County. And I gotta tell you, I was so glad to see that. That will help us in our capital funding for Southern Wayne as well as other areas. And if you will notice there, there's an additional six hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars that they are wanting to appropriate. And I told him that I've been a pro advocate of education in Wayne County. All of my family has attended Wayne County schools, graduated. I got grandchildren in the school system also. And we really appreciate that support, especially in Southern Wayne County. As Mr. Henderson mentioned, Mount Olive Middle School, thank you so much for keeping that alive. And also at Southern Wayne, we're hoping that this will relieve the burden that you have been facing financially and that we can not only get a gym, but hopefully classrooms for, for our school. My boys went to school at Southern Wayne, and some of them had classes in the trailers. And those trailers, when they were there twenty-five years ago, were having problems with heating and air. And I'm sure that hasn't changed any since they were there. But I really appreciate your support, your advocacy for our youth, and I hope that anytime you're in Mount Olive, you will come to see us and we can work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hales, is your faculty member here? Alright, would Grantham Middle Agriculture Education Instructor Randy Evans and Wayne School of Engineering Drafting Teacher Ms. Julie Heath, and I realize that she can't be here this evening, but if we have any family members and principals for Randy Evans, please come up? Mr. Evans is currently completing his fourth year as an agriculture education instructor at Grantham Middle School. Those who know him state that he lives and breathes agriculture, creating an engaging learning environment for his students. Through the school's FFA program, students are also exposed to a variety of opportunities, ranging from local fair competitions to growing products in a campus greenhouse for fundraisers. After working thirty-four years in the poultry industry, Mr. Evans retired and began his second career in education. Mr. Evans holds a bachelor's degree in agriculture education with a minor in poultry. Mrs. Heath was recently recognized as the district's two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen CTE High School Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Heath is completing her seventh year as the drafting teacher at Wayne School of Engineering. Those who know her say she strives to tackle new curriculum to improve the program at Wayne School of Engineering. In addition to serving as a Technology Student Association TSA Club advisor, taking students to local, regional, and state competitions, she also works to integrate hands-on projects in the classroom to engage students in learning. This year, she added a STEM guitar curriculum, funded through a tri-county Bright Ideas Grant, which produced excitement amongst students as they worked to construct their own electric guitar to take home upon completion. Mrs. Heath holds a bachelor's degree in biology. Prior to teaching, Mrs. Heath was a residential kitchen and. Prior to teaching, Mrs. Heath was a residential kitchen and bath designer. Both Mr. Evans and Mrs. Heath were recognized as this year's CTE Teachers of the Year during the 2017-18 CTE slash CTSO celebration held at the district's Professional Development and Family Engagement Center. On behalf of the board, we congratulate both of you, both of you for your achievement of being named a Wayne County Public Schools CTE Middle and High School Teacher of the Year. And thank you for all that you do to support teaching and learning in the areas of career and technical education. Your certificate reads... Certificate of Recognition, the Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Mr. Randy Evans for being named 2017-2018 Career Technical Education Middle School Teacher of the Year, given this day, May 29, 2018. Signed by the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and the Board Chair, Patricia Burden. And I have a certificate for Mrs. Heath that reads the same as the saying. So thank you, and be safe. Did you come around and shake the boy's hand?
The boys?
Okay. North Carolina Scholastic, Scholastic High School Director of the Year. Would, well, he is already up here with his wife and his principal, Mr. Tony Blair. Mr. Blair was recently named North Carolina Association for Scholastic Activities or NCASA 2018 North Carolina Scholastic High School Director of the Year. Last fall, Mr. Blair began the year as a new scholastic director for NCASA, leading the middle and high school scholastic programs at his school. He was among fifty nominees statewide for the award. NCASA states that in his role, Mr. Blair took on a shared leadership approach by including more teachers in the sponsorship of the programs and maintaining student involvement in NCASA competitions. It is worth noting, under Mr. Blair's leadership, Wayne School of Engineering became the first school in the history of NCASA to finish in the top three of both the NCASA Challenge Cup and the NCASA Scholastic Cup standings. Mr. Blair began his education career with Wayne County Public Schools in 2008 and has served as a teacher at Wayne School of Engineering since 2014. Mr. Blair is certified in middle grade social studies, secondary grade social studies, and middle grade science. He holds a master's degree in instructional technology. Mr. Blair, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you on your achievement of being named NCASA 2018 North Carolina Scholastic High School Director of the Year. And we thank you for all that you do to support teaching and learning at your school. And you have a certificate which says, Certificate of Recognition, the Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Tony Blair for being named the North Carolina Association for Scholastic Activities Director of the Year, given this day, May 29, 2018. Signed by the Chair of the Board, Patricia Burden, and the Secretary to the Board, Dr. Michael Dunsmore. Congratulations. Uh, Mr. Raymond Smith?
Would Grantham Middle's Anna Kate Weeks, her family, school counselor, and principal, please come forward? Good things going on at Grantham?
Yes, sir.
All right. Each year, the Duke Talent Identification Program, or Duke TIP, identifies a group of academically talented students in the United States based on their exceptional grade level standardized test scores. Only those who score at or above the ninety-fifth percentile qualify. Those students are invited to participate in the seventh grade talent search and to take the ACT or SAT, which are designed for college-bound eleventh and twelfth graders. After Ms. Weeks' ACT scores were tallied, she qualified for Duke TIP state recognition because her test scores were in the top twenty-five percent of the talent search pool. She was recently recognized at a state ceremony held at East Carolina University. The largest program of its kind, the Duke TIP Seventh Grade Talent Search, helps families determine how advanced their students' academic abilities truly are. Taking an above-average grade level test is an experience that allows gifted seventh graders to more accurately gauge their academic abilities and potential as they, as they need more advanced examinations than they find in their grade level. Since its inception in nineteen eighty, over 2.8 million students have participated in the Duke TIP Talent Search. Ms. Weeks, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you for this achievement. We hope that this talent search helps you see your academic potential and motivates you to continue working in all you do. The certificate reads, "The Wayne County Board of Education, Anna Kate Weeks, for qualifying for state recognition in the Duke Talent Identification Program, signed by the Chairman of the Board, Ms. Patricia Burden, and the Secretary to the Board, Dr. Dunsmore." Would you come forward, please? Ms. Burden over here picking on me. Talking about that, what kind of tip did my mom get about me in the seventh grade? We won't go there. Would, and I, and I, forgive me if I mess this up. Kayden Rice, Reese, Reese, I messed it up. Would Kayden Reese, his family, and his principal, please come forward? They're not here? Okay, we'll come back to this one if they come in, okay?
Mr. Flowers?
With Dillard Middle School Science Teacher Kimberly Stedner Clayton, along with her family, the principal, and anyone else in their party, come forward. Okay. Ms. Stedner Clayton, Clayton was recently named a district 2017-18 Beginning Teacher of the Year at the Beginning Teacher Program Completion Ceremony earlier this month at District Professional Development and Family Engagement Center. This is Ms. Stedner Clayton's third year with Wayne County Public School as a teacher at Dillard Middle. She holds a bachelor's degree in middle grade, middle grade science and math and plans to graduate in July with a master's degree in education curriculum and instruction. Her principal states that she focuses on students' learning and utilizes data from various assessments and differentiates instruction to meet the needs of the diverse learners in her classroom. It is worth noting that during the Beginning Teacher Program Completion Ceremony, Ms. Stedner Clayton was among approximately sixty teachers recognized for completing the district's three-year Beginning Teacher Program. Ms. Stedner Clayton, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you on your achievement of being named Wayne County Public School Beginning Teacher of the Year and wish you the very best in your professional career with our district. And the certificate reads, Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Kimberly Stedner Clayton for being named the 2017-18 Wayne County Public School Beginning Teacher of the Year, signed by our superintendent and the Chairman of the Board, Ms. Patricia Burden. Ms. Clayton? Would Grantham Elementary Assistant Principal Bill Joyner, please come forward and anyone in his party? Bill Joyner? We are recognizing Mr. Joyner this evening because Wayne County Public Schools and the Wayne County Principal and Assistant Principal Association recently named him the 2018-19 Assistant Principal of the Year. Mr. Joyner began his education career in nineteen ninety as a math teacher in Green County. He joined Wayne County Public Schools in nineteen ninety-two as a teacher at Grantham School. Mr. Joyner transitioned to school administration in 2015 as an elementary curriculum specialist and later named Assistant Principal in Grantham Elementary. Mr. Joyner is a National Board certified. He holds a bachelor's degree in math education and a master's degree in school administration. At Wayne County Public School Assistant Principal of the Year, Mr. Joyner will receive a $1,000 local award. Congratulations. Mr. Joyner, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you for being named this year's Wayne County Public School Assistant Principal of the Year. And our certificate for you that reads, Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Bill Joyner for being named 2018-19 Wayne County Public School Assistant Principal of the Year, signed by our superintendent and the Chairman of the Board, Ms. Burden. Congratulations.
Mr. Henderson?
Would the members of the Eastern Wayne Elementary Battle of the Books Team, their families, their coaches, and their principal, please come forward? Members of the Eastern Wayne Elementary Battle of the Books Team. Here they come in their green. Come on up here. Come on up here. If their parents, please come up with them. Coaches? The Eastern Wayne Elementary Battle of the Books Team recently won the North Carolina Region Two Battle of the Books Competition held in New Bern. It is important to note that this is the second year in a row that the team, under the leadership of their media coordinator, Kristi Davis, has been regional champions. The elementary school Battle of the Books is a quiz bowl-style competition that encourages reading. Contestants who are in the grades four and five must read eighteen books chosen by a statewide committee, and the competition tests students' comprehension of the books. The Eastern Wayne Elementary Battle of the Books Team competed against nine other elementary school teams in Region Two that also won their district-level competitions. The Battle of the Books program is coordinated by the Media Center program at participating schools. Participating teams spend much of the school year preparing for the competition under the guidance of their school's media coordinator. In addition to reading the competition selections, students sharpen their reading comprehension skills through team discussions, reading quizzes, and practice competitions held in their school's media center. The regional competition is the highest level of competition in the Elementary Battle of the Books program. On behalf of the board, we congratulate all of you for this accomplishment. Winning the North Carolina Region Two Elementary Battle of the Books Competition took hard work, dedication, and a positive attitude. We hope this experience was one you will never forget and one that will encourage all of you to show the same characteristics off the competition stage so that you can be champions in all that you do. As we call your name, as I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. And this certificate reads, "The Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Kristi Davis as the coach of the Eastern Wayne Elementary 2017-18 Southeast Region Two Championship Elementary Battle of the Books Team." Ms. Davis? We're gonna... Next, "The Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Sarah Robinson as the assistant coach of the Eastern Wayne Elementary 2017-18 Southeast Region Two Championship Elementary Battle of the Books Team." Ms. Robinson? "The Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Adrian Barlow as a member of the Eastern Wayne Elementary 2017 Southeast Region Two Championship Elementary Battle of the Books Team." Team." I want to read in a...Daniel Connolly? Roberto Marquez Gil?
Roberto.
Now, I'm gonna try this. Tell me if I'm wrong. Is it Isaiah Oates? All right. Carolyn Page? Stephen Zane? We're gonna ask you all to go around and shake their hands with all of our board members, and let's all give them a round of applause.
Congratulations. 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 Mr. Pridgen?
Yes, ma'am?
You waited till I was happy?
No, I was trying to get you before you said that.
Would the participating members of the North Carolina Middle School All-State Chorus, their families, their choral directors, and their principals, please come forward?
Y'all spread on that?
Okay, now here's the deal. This is open session, and our school board attorney has just advised us that since this is open session, you must sing for us. Are you ready? Why are you so red, Mr. Attorney? Thank y'all so much for being here tonight. These five middle school students that we're honoring tonight were among hundreds of students from across the state to showcase their voices and musical talents in the 2018 North Carolina Middle School All-State Chorus. Each spring, the North Carolina Music Educators Association hosts the All-State Middle School Chorus. This year's chorus performed in late April in Greensboro, featuring a sixth-grade chorus, a grade seven and eight treble chorus, and grade seven and eight mix choruses. Leading up to each choral event, students spent countless hours rehearsing at home and with their music teachers at school. Students then traveled to their performance site to work with guest clinicians who brought all of the various vocal parts together to a level of musical excellence. On behalf of the Board, we congratulate all of you on your achievement and for your efforts to enrich and cultivate your musical talents. By singing in the North Carolina Middle School All-State Chorus, you have proven that some of the best middle school vocalists in North Carolina are from right here in Wayne County. As we call your names, I'd ask that you would please come forward and accept your certificate. And the certificates read as follows. "The Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Mary Anderson for participating in the North Carolina Middle School All-State Chorus, given this day May 29, 2018 by Patricia Burden, Chairman of the Board of Education, Dr. Michael Dunsmore, Secretary to the Board." This also looks good on a college resume one day, okay? Keep that in mind. Also, we are awarding a certificate to Ms. Christina Gordon. And next, we have Michaela Gray. And then we have Caleb Gray. And we also have Destiny Rouse. If you will, please circle around and shake the board members' hands. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. West?
Would Greenwood Middle Instructional Assistant Tracy Hand, along with her family and principal, please come forward? Mrs. Hand was recently named the District's 2018-2019 Instructional Assistant of the Year at the First Annual Instructional Assistant of the Year Reception held last month at the district's administrative offices. Mrs. Hand has five years of service with the school district, with two at her present school. In her role, Mrs. Hand is in a self-contained exceptional children's classroom, providing constant support and instruction. As part of her education philosophy, she believes in the importance of meeting the needs of students individually and collectively. Her principal states her work is commendable and that her efforts extend beyond the classroom through her high standards of excellence. Through this local recognition program, the selection committee spent hours reading portfolios and interviewing the top instructional assistants in the district. Mrs. Hand was found to be dedicated, passionate, and highly effective in supporting the students and teachers at her school. As the district's Instructional Assistant of the Year, Mrs. Hand will receive a $500 check. Mrs. Hand, on behalf of the Board, we congratulate you on your achievement of being named Wayne County Public Schools Instructional Assistant of the Year, and thank you for all that you do to support teaching and learning. And your certificate reads, "Certificate of recognition, the Wayne County Public Schools recognizes Tracy Hand for being named 2018-2019 Instructional Assistant of the Year, signed by Dr. Dunsmore, Secretary to the Board, and Patricia Burden, Chairman of the Board of Education." Thank you.
Nice seeing you again. Congratulations. Congratulations. Give him a little credit.
Now I'd like to ask the Rosewood Elementary Music Teacher, Mrs. Denise Tilden, along with her family and principal, please come forward. I hope she's excited tonight as she was when she received her award. Because it had to have been at the banquet to appreciate it. Mrs. Tilden was recently named the District's Teacher of the Year at the annual Teacher Assistant Principal and Principal of the Year banquet held last month at Walnut Creek Country Club. The district's Teacher of the Year program is part of the national program that has been in place for over fifty years. As part of the program, each of the district's thirty-two schools name a Teacher of the Year to represent it in the coming year. A selection committee then interviewed each candidate and narrowed the field to three finalists, one each from the elementary, middle, and high school level. The three finalists were interviewed again by the selection committee, and the top honor went to Mrs. Tilden. Mrs. Tilden has five years of teaching experience with four years at her present school. She says that she feels passionate about the power that teachers and music can have in bringing healing in the world. As the district's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Tilden will receive a $2,500 local award and move on to a regional level of the Teacher of the Year program. Ms. Tilden, on behalf of the Board, we congratulate you on your achievement. Ms. Tilden, you exemplify the best in teaching, and we wish you the best as you advance to the next round of the Teacher of the Year program. And your certificate reads, "The Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Denise Tilden for being named the 2018-2019 Wayne County Public Schools Teacher of the Year, signed by Dr. Dunsmore, Secretary to the Board, and Patricia Burden, Chairman of the Board of Education." Ms. Tilden?
Thank you. Thank you for all the...
How are you, sir?
Mrs. Smith, congratulations to you as well.
It does not appear that Mr. Reese will be able to make it tonight, but I've been instructed by our Board Chair to read the accomplishment nonetheless. Mr. Rice Reese is a senior at Rosewood High. He was recently appointed to the United States Air Force Academy. The United States Air Force Academy, which is located near Colorado Springs, Colorado, offers a four-year degree program that is designed to help cadets develop the knowledge, character, leadership, and motivation skills essential for careers as Air Force officers. Following the completion of the program, each cadet graduates with a Bachelor of Science degree and a commission as a second lieutenant in the Air Force. Earning an appointment to the Air Force Academy is a highly competitive process. The appointment is awarded to approximately twelve hundred out of more than nine thousand applicants each year. Mr. Reese secured his appointment based on academic performance, personal accomplishments, athletic ability, and a congressional nomination. During his high school career, Mr. Reese has served as the Vice President of the National Honor Society, participated in various extracurricular programs, and was a student athlete who ran track, played tennis, and was a North Carolina men's state champion through USA Gymnastics. Additionally, Mr. Reese volunteers his time through various community outreach and service programs. After Hurricane Matthew in 2016, Mr. Reese lent his talents and abilities to Protestant preschool, assisting families in need by helping collect and distribute clothes, food, and other personal items. It is especially noteworthy that Mr. Reese was awarded an appointment to each military academy, five in total. For each branch of the United States Military, it is also worth noting that Mr. Reese will be joining his brother Evan Reese in Colorado Springs, who also earned an appointment to the United States Air Force Academy in 2015. In late June, Mr. Reese will report to the Air Force Academy for his appointment. On behalf of the Board, we congratulate you on this achievement and wish you the best in your academic and military aspirations. The certificate reads, "The Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Caden Reese for receiving a United States Air Force Academy appointment, given by Board Chair Patricia Burden and Secretary to the Board, Dr. Dunsmore." And you will receive this on his behalf.
I am going to need approval of the Board Agenda, but before, I will need a motion for us to move the following items, W through B-B, from Board Action to General. From Consent Agenda to Board Action. And it will become G-H-I-J-K-L, in same order as listed, W through B-B.
Madam Chair, make that motion.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion?
The motion is to move those items and approve the agenda. Is that correct?
Is that what?
Motion is to move those items and to approve the agenda.
Okay. All right. In agreement, show by raising your right hand. Okay. So we have moved those items, and we have approved the agenda. So now we need the approval of a minutes from April 23, 2018.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Sir.
Thank you. All in favor? Raise your right hand. We also have approval of closed session minutes, April 23, 2018. And is the attorney, I need your assistance, is that also inclusive of opening them?
These can...excuse me. These should not be opened.
Okay.
They should remain closed due to confidential content.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the closed session minutes, and they will remain closed.
For move? End second.
All right. Thank you. If there's no discussion, all in favor, show by raising your right hand. All right. And now we have Mr. Lewis. Dr. Lewis, are you going to present us with school opening and closing times for 2018-2019 school year?
Good evening. I bring to you, in your consideration tonight, recommended opening and closing times for the 2018-19 school year. All of the recommended opening and closing times are the same as they were for 17-18 with three exceptions. The Transportation Department is requesting that we consider implementing tiered buses to serve Fremont Stars Elementary School, Northwest Elementary School, and Norway Middle School. If we choose to do that, if the Board chooses to allow that, we would adjust their start times to match up with other elementary and middle schools that already use tiered busing. Mr. Lee is here to address any questions. Mr. Lee is here to address any questions you may have about the transportation needs and why this request is being made. Just for your information on the sheet that you have in Board Docs, schools that are highlighted in the same colors already have tiered busing in place. And so, for example, the three Spring Creek schools, all highlighted in the same shade of purple, are all served by a tiered bus system in that area. And so, you can see where the tiers currently are. And then, the newly proposed tier is in the dark blue shading with the bold italic print, Fremont, Northwest, and Norwayan, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Dunsmore. My recommendation is basically based on economics. This school year, we were eighty-five percent efficient. Working with a five-million-dollar budget, basically, that means we lost about $750,000 of state funding. So, the objective is to try to close that gap. The only way to do that is to reduce the number of buses that we run. If we make a change this year, it will not impact the coming school year, 18 and 19. This change would affect the following school year. This school year, we have reduced, we've taken about six buses off, which will move us in the right direction. What we're basically doing is giving an option, this is by the only path we have. You can't, we gotta do maintenance, we gotta buy fuel. Things have, fuel has really went up this year. So, basically, we've ran out of transportation dollars probably a couple of weeks ago. So, the five-hundred-some-odd-thousand dollars that we had locally, that's spent. So, what we're looking at is, we'll probably spend probably close to a million dollars local. So, what I'm doing is, I'm giving you a path where we can try to avoid that in the 18 and 19 school year. And basically, as you guys probably know, that our funding is based upon efficiency. Dollars spent the previous year is the base of your budget, and if you can come, or the more efficient you are, the more state dollars you get. Other than that, you have to pay with the local dollars.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'd be glad to make a motion that we change the school times at the highlighted schools that he's mentioned.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
You just talking about the schools that he mentioned, or are you talking about the entire listing?
Oh, well, the entire listing, but he's recommended those three in particular to change. All the rest are gonna be the same as they were this year. The motion is to approve the recommended school opening and closing times as recommended?
Yes.
I want to make a comment. Obviously, we probably need to do this, but Board Member Smith, I've talked about this quite a bit. You have your efficiency, but then it creates problems for the parents. And at these schools, I think, without looking, I think I skimmed over it, it looks like they start at seven-thirty, and then the middle school starts at eight-thirty. So, you have an hour span of time. Well, Spring Creek Elementary, Spring Creek Middle, seven-thirty and eight-thirty, some of the ones that are currently tiered. So, you have an hour's time there, and I've had a lot of complaints from parents that have children in elementary school and in middle school for that span of time. I look at Rosewood Elementary there, that is not tiered, if I'm understanding your chart. Rosewood Elementary takes in at seven-forty-five, the middle school takes in at seven-thirty. There's only fifteen minutes of time difference there. Is there any way, short of doing the tiering, or rather eliminating the tiering, that you can make the start times closer together?
Not to my knowledge. Basically...
We've had the conversation before, and obviously, we need to be efficient. So, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but that's the dilemma as a board. I guess if we wanted all the schools to start at the same time, we would have to spend a lot more money, is the bottom line.
Mr. Flowers, I've got a question. Mr. Lee, just in the scenario that he just gave you, with Rosewood, and it, the basic problem, if I'm not mistaken, by the way I look at it, is the distance between the schools as far as starting times go for tiering.
Rosewood Elementary School is not tiered. The high school and the middle school share buses.
Right.
So, they're set up a little bit different.
Yeah, but they're close, they're close together.
Well, they're right beside each other.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bridgen, I understand, but Spring Creek Elementary and Spring Creek Middle, you can almost throw a rock from one to the other. I mean, they're right beside the side, but they're still, the opening time is an hour apart.
Mr. Flowers, they're a good five or six miles apart.
You're right, I'm sorry, I'm confusing with the high school.
The middle and higher are close together.
Yeah, you're right. I stand corrected.
And we're talking about, Rosewood is a much smaller school district.
It is. Logistically, the district is much smaller. I've made that comment and debate many times too, and with big districts, you create these big expanses in start times. But I'm not happy with, I'm not happy with this, but I mean, I understand the economics of it, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to speak to this issue as well, because I have been receiving some phone calls, particularly from elementary kids in the southern, parents of elementary kids in the southern end. They, for example, at Carver, I think they take in at eight-thirty. Many parents have said that they have to be to work at eight o'clock, and the school would not allow them to come in till eight o'clock for the elementary. And then, secondly, there's been some concern because they have to go, I guess, one bus has to go and come back and pick up another group of kids, and that doesn't take place until like four-fifteen or four-thirty in the evening. And for elementary students, for elementary kids, that's kind of rough to be leaving home at seven o'clock in the morning and getting home at six o'clock in the evening.
Well, sir, the bus running a double route, that's due to not having a driver, and that doesn't have anything to do with tiering.
Well, now, in speaking with the principal there, that happens every day. So, are we having a problem at Carver as far as drivers?
We are still short drivers, yes, sir.
So, is putting the schools on a tiered program because we are short of drivers?
Well, actually, tiering the schools will reduce the number of buses and drivers you need, so it should help us out.
One of the things that we have to take into consideration, and this is absolutely not a new issue, it's an ongoing issue, but you have probably, and I'm not pointing this out for any particular reason, other than for the point of understanding, when you have programs like the School of Engineering in Wayne Elder Middle College, that is probably the most inefficient transportation program that you can imagine, because the kids are coming from all over the county, and there's no rhyme or reason to it. Whoever gets in, they get picked up and they get transported to this one location. That's called a many-to-one concept. Well, in that concept, that's as inefficient as it gets. There's no district lines, there are no boundaries, there's no nothing. So, when we have these types of transportation programs that are incorporated with our regular transportation programs, the efficiency rating goes down, 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 down. So, you've got to create efficiency somewhere else. And the best way to create efficiency is through tiering. Now, as Mr. Lee said, it is absolutely imperative that we look at it not only for efficiency purposes, but we do have a shortage of bus drivers, and we continue to have that shortage. I mean, let's keep it real, our bus drivers are some of the lowest-paid employees in our school system. And it's hard to keep bus drivers when we pay them the way we do. And it's a fact. And so, if that's going to continue to be a practice of ours, then we're gonna have to live with this outcome. Tiering the district...
Yes, sir. That's one of the arguments I've made for years.
Tiering the district will also provide more pay or more time for some of the drivers, which should increase the possibility of keeping those drivers. And the only other area that really impacts our efficiency is the Edgewood Program, because that's another county-wide program. And that program, we have about eight school buses, and we probably have less than a hundred students, a hundred and twenty students riding. But with the wheelchairs and the time, and the buses going all over the entire county, there's not a whole lot you can do about that.
Well, even in a tiered situation, could it be tiered reversely, where you've got your elementary coming in at eight-thirty, and you've got your high school coming in at seven-thirty? Could it be reversed, that the high school will come in at eight-thirty, and the elementary kids could come in earlier?
You could tier it in any direction, but I think what we're going for is consistency with what we have in the other districts.
I see the buses come by my house about five-thirty in the morning. When you say the school takes in at seven-thirty, it starts picking up kids way earlier than that, way before light.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And that's mighty, that's mighty early for kids.
Well, Mr. Henderson, your point is well-taken, but I can reflect back to a time when this lady to my left was a principal, and she would get the bus in at the Transportation Director every year because she wanted her kids on the bus first. And of course, the other principal of the elementary school wanted their kids on the bus first or last. So, it's not going to ever be one of those things that's going to be a perfect fit. She's laughing, but she knows I'm telling the truth. So, it is one of those things that, I understand exactly where you're coming from, but everybody's not going to be happy. It's not going to be, it's not that simple, as it was.
And I understand that. All I'm just saying is, is there a possibility that we could change the way we do something? Sometimes the change is good.
Like he said, you can put it in any order you want.
I know, when I was in high school, I was a bus driver, that was before you, when they let students drive buses. But I had three tiers. I carried an elementary route, a middle school route, and a high school route. And I left the house at six o'clock in the morning, picked my first students up at six-ten, and I finished up at the high school at quarter night. But that's, it's not an easy situation, it's not an easy calculation. I understand the problems, and if we fix one thing, we're creating another somewhere else. But you guys, with your computers, systems, and everything, can figure out the best way for us to do it. And I approve, because I hope that you're utilizing all of the data that you can to make it as efficient as possible, and I understand that.
We're basically going with your state recommendation.
Mr. Lee, let me ask you a question. I mean, you do take, I'm sure you're taking consideration of the fact, just like Mr. Henderson said, and I've argued this for eight years, but an elementary student probably is the last age group that should be left alone at home in the morning. So, it just stands to reason, if they got on the bus earlier, their parents would be there to see them, some of them get on the bus, where if they get on the bus at eight-thirty, you know, they could conceivably be, and I know they don't get on the bus at eight-thirty, that's what time school takes. They could conceivably be left, you know, a third, second, third grader standing on the bus, where if we put them on the bus earlier, you know, I mean, a high school student would probably fare a little bit better than an elementary student.
It's my understanding that when tiered busing first began to be used, there were two primary reasons for having the middle school kids go first. One was so that the older siblings would be at home to receive the younger kids in the afternoon. So, if the choice is whether or not to try to have parents make additional arrangements in the morning or additional arrangements in the afternoon, I think that was, at that point, the afternoon was chosen. And Mr. Smith, I think you were around when that happened, so if I'm wrong, please correct me. The second primary reason for having the middle school kids go first was so that they were done with their school day in time enough to go ahead and dismiss and participate in middle school athletics without missing so much class time on the end. If a middle school was dismissing at three-forty-five, and game time is four o'clock, rather than dismissing at two-thirty and game time is four o'clock, I think there was some worry for the middle schoolers who would be missing class time due to athletics. So, again, no perfect answer, but I think those were the two primary reasons, as I remember them, when we first started tiering in the first place.
I was talking about not the middle school, but switching to high school and elementary, because high school sports start later in the day than middle school sports do, so if they got out later, they could still, unless they're traveling some distance, but...
Right now, our three largest high schools, Southern Wayne, Eastern Wayne High, and Acock High, are not tiered at all. They have their own buses. Rosewood High is tiered with Rosewood Middle. Spring Creek High is tiered, but they do have an earlier start and end time. And who does that leave? Goldsboro. Goldsboro also shares buses, but they're on an alternate schedule regardless.
Well, may I ask this question? Once upon a time, when we had to choose and work with each other, and the high school, let's say, got the early start time, then the next year, they would rotate. Well, was that a part of the tier program as well?
Not only was it part of the tier program, but it was part of the tier program too, because principals, they would cry literal tears because...
Only the elementary principals did that, not the high school principals.
But no, it was, but remember, in the central attendance area, your travel time is a lot, a lot...
Less, yeah.
And it's a lot more densely populated, and so, it's a lot easier to make that transition in the central attendance area because of the size of it.
Well, is there a possibility that we could try switching them over maybe in one part of the county, just to see exactly how it works? Is that a possibility?
You said you'd try to maintain consistency at the grade levels.
I can do whatever you ask, I'm just giving you options. I think if you ask an existing district, it's already set up to change, I think that would be more problematic for, you know, it's difficult for people to change. People don't like change. So, I think if we were going to do something different, then it would probably make sense to do it with the northern district. Either way, early or late, it doesn't make any difference to transportation. We're just trying to use less buses, less maintenance. So, you know, we're trying to save money. So, it doesn't really truly matter to me who goes first.
But you said something about it would be better if it was done in the northern part of the county instead of the southern?
We're basically talking about the northern district now, so we're asking...
No, I'm talking about the southern, I'm talking about the southern district.
Why the northern district?
Well, because the northern district is not tiered. So, if we changed the southern district, that'd be another change, so we're not going to do the northern district at that point. So, are we making two changes to make one, or is that what we're talking about? Or you just want to test the southern district?
That's what I'm talking about, just testing the southern district.
We could do that, but that's not going to save us any money.
But I think the problem that we have here is that, the key thing is that we are trying to save money, and we're trying to be more efficient. And because of some programs that we already have that do not allow us a high efficiency rate, we have to tighten up where we can.
Right.
And if we give the elementary the early start time, we still, the parents are going to have an issue in the afternoon. And it seems to me that in the afternoon, when they are at work, they have less control than they might have during the morning hours. So...
Well, in the interest of Mr. Henderson's request, I think it, you know, is worth looking into, but I would suggest that you have principal input in whatever decision you make.
That's what I was going to suggest, maybe those that are tiered in the southern end, if they could come together, sit down, and talk about it. Maybe they might say, well, hey, the way it is now is fine. But I know I've had some calls from parents down on the southern end about that situation.
Can I ask a question in regards to, okay, this is funded by the state?
Yes, sir.
All right? And you say to save money, what would you do with the money that's being saved?
Not ask for local dollars.
Not ask for a local dollar? Is the county contributing to your budget?
This year, they have contributed more than $500,000. Last year, we only spent, I think, $80,000 local. So, this year, we probably will spend a million dollars local. So, that's what it's really about.
Okay, so the state, the state funds you based on your efficiency rating, is that...
Well, I think what, the bottom line is, I think the state does not have enough money to fund everybody a hundred percent, so they come up with a formula, and they push you to be efficient. So, if you play... So if you play by their rules, uh, then you can get a hundred percent funding. Uh, if you don't, then you pay for it locally.
It's got to be a hundred percent from the state.
Well, last year, we pretty much.
But you got, you got to lower, you basically lower the services to get down to their efficiency rate.
Basically, basically.
And, and then we don't have any, uh, ad librum tax money going into the busing.
Right. So it's either you pay for it or they pay for it and you do it their way.
All right. Are we ready? Do we have, we have a motion on the floor? Phyllis, could you reread the motion, please?
Mr. Pridgen made the motion to approve the school opening and closing times twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen as presented. And Mr. West seconded the motion.
Okay. Does that stand? Mr. Pridgen and Mr. West?
I'm good.
All right. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all in favor indicate by showing a rap, by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please note it was the southern end of the county that opposed that.
No. Oh, well, yes. All the way across the southern end of the county. All right. Now, we, uh, we've had a presentation regarding our career and technical education program, and we need to approve the, the local plan. I need a motion to do so, please.
Try to do it. Do it there.
That's right.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, CTE local plan for the ensuing year.
And I second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. And next we have staff and facilities options. Dr. Lewis.
Thank you. At our budget work session, uh, just a little over a week ago, I presented to you some information about staffing options for what you had tried to do at low performing elementary schools to try to go ahead and meet as best we could the, uh, class size reduction mandate that will be phased in by the state over the next four years. Uh, you all asked for a little more information on that, and this is what I've tried to provide in the document that's posted in Board Docs. I've tried to project out for you not only, uh, the additional, uh, teachers that would be needed year by year. If you tried, for example, to stay one year ahead of the state mandate or two years ahead of the state mandate or, uh, finally all three years ahead, but I also was able to, uh, go out and meet with each of the principals and find out from them how they would handle each of these scenarios in their facilities. We were able to take a look at the facilities that they have, uh, two, uh, two of which, uh, will, will have problems meeting and three that will be okay, um, and determine exactly which classrooms they would use if provided additional staffing. So, uh, option one you have here is the projected impact of accelerating class size reduction by one year. Option two is the projected impact of, uh, accelerating by two years. And then finally, option three, uh, is the projected impact of accelerating by three years. Uh, I'm hoping that this is what you have asked me to bring to you. Uh, I believe it is. If, um, uh, please let me know and I'll be glad to talk you through, uh, any of the rest of it.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes, sir.
Um, when you say you need additional classroom space, how many students are you putting in that class? Is it like fifteen?
In, in a kindergarten, it, it, it depends on how many years ahead of the state we're trying to stay, okay? Next year, the mandated class size will be an average district wide of twenty in K through three with no class larger than twenty-three. Each year after that, it reduces by one on average and by one maximum until finally we get to the point where a kindergarten average is eighteen with no class larger than twenty-one. First gr, first grade, an average of sixteen with no class larger than nineteen. And second and third, an average of seventeen with no class larger than twenty.
I know it was pretty convoluted, um.
Essentially, what we're trying to accomplish over the next four years is to reduce on average by three students per classroom, per grade level, on average. Uh, the variation is in kindergarten and first grade. For some reason, uh, they will, uh, allow us to put more students in a kindergarten class than first grade, and then it levels out in second and third.
So if we go with option two, what size would our kindergarten be?
Your kindergarten classes at that point would be a maximum of twenty-one. The average would be eighteen. We would, we would use an allotment ratio of, uh, one teacher per eighteen students. And then, of course, in situations where there's rounding to be done, the average might be eighteen, but it might be nineteen in this one and seventeen in that one.
Okay. And what about first grade?
First grade would also be, uh, would be at seventeen that year.
Is that max or?
No, seventeen average, twenty max. Second grade and third grade would both be at eighteen, max of twenty-one. Eighteen on average, max of twenty-one. That would put us two years ahead of the state's schedule.
Okay. So that's option two. Now, if we went with option two, did you talk to the principal like Brogdon, uh, Primary? We visited that school, so we know there is no space there. So does the principal have a plan that allows her to be satisfied and her staff to be satisfied if we can grant them three teachers?
I talked with, um, Brogdon Primary and Spring Creek are the two troublesome schools, okay? Brogdon Primary has no classroom space that they can take without disrupting what the principal views as a valuable program. Art, music, ESL services, pre-K, the computer labs. And, uh, just a word about the computer labs. I asked Ms. Wynn specifically about the computer lab. She is currently running two programs that she values very much. One is Imagine Learning, which is, um, essentially, uh, a scheduled elective that the EL students, the ESL students participate in on a routine basis. The other is Class Works. She is not in favor of replacing her computer labs with computer carts because those students are oftentimes drawn from different classrooms to come together in one space. And a cart of computers doesn't solve that problem. They need a space for that class to meet, okay? So at Brogdon Primary, Ms. Wynn would choose regardless of which phase we go with. She would choose co-teaching over any other option she has. At Spring Creek Elementary School, she does expect to have one open classroom and it's room one oh nine. She is expecting that room to open up. She would place a teacher in there. And then if she had teachers beyond that, she would also explore co-teaching before she would place art, music, or any other, uh, program like that, uh, on a cart. The other, the other three schools in the mix, Carver Elementary, Carver Heights, and Eastern Wayne, uh, would be able to function without disrupting key programs.
Okay.
Dr. Lewis, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
So what, what's your recommendation, other than doing what the state had recommended that the districts in North Carolina, how they accept the classroom reductions of?
Yes, sir. What I tried to figure out was what can we do to help these five without burdening the other schools that also serve particularly grades four through eight? Because when the state, and, you know, Mr. Hayes, jump in. When the state gives us our teacher allotment, it's based on district-wide numbers. They give us X number of teachers to serve X number of students, okay? So if you want to reduce class sizes over here, typically you've got to raise them over here. That's where your extra teachers are going to come from. The option, or the, the mandate that was given to us at February twenty-sixth board meeting, which was to go ahead and fully implement class size reduction, is going to cause us to need to allot in grades four through eight at a class ratio of twenty-eight students per room on average. Typically, we like to do twenty-six, okay? So if what you're asking me is, is there a better option that we can kind of ease into this? I think option one is easy. Option two, we can probably make work. And the reason for that, Mr. Hayes, um, since February twenty-sixth, we received a small allotment to, uh, be used for enhancement teachers. Uh, and I think it's a total of nine positions or ten positions. About ten positions. These were positions we were not expecting to get, but we did. Now, the state gave them to us with the thinking that this would help us pay for enhancement teachers that we're already paying for out of other funding sources like, um, at-risk or low wealth or something like that. Right. So theoretically, we can use these extra teachers that the state is giving us for option one and most of option two and just leave the funding of the rest of the enhancement teachers alone. We won't gain anything, but we won't lose anything either. If we go with option three, which is to fully implement the class size reduction, then you are definitely, in my opinion, you're definitely looking at larger class sizes in grades four through eight.
So do we, does Wayne County Public Schools, do we forfeit any state funding by going at it on, on our own opposed to the way they had suggested that they roll out the classroom reduction?
It's my understanding that we're choosing to go above and beyond.
Will we be funded like every other district, even though we're doing it differently?
Because they're giving us some money.
Based on the funding formulas, we'll be provided that level of, uh, resources from the state. And then, you know, it will be up to us to stay with the, uh, resources and do whatever we have to do to provide enough classrooms, teachers to do, you know, how we're going to lay them out in the proposal and so forth. So we won't be penalized. The, the state will go through and calculate what they're going to provide us based on the formulas.
So we're going to get the same funding that any other district would get if they're rolling it out like the state suggested they do? So with that said, your recommendation is option one?
I would say either option one or at most option two. I can't in good faith recommend option three because it means increased class sizes in upper grades.
Dr. Lewis, I have some observations. I'd like to interject. Board members, this is a little bit, um, detailed, so, um, if I go too fast, just stop me. I asked Dr. Lewis to give me some, uh, current and projected, um, enrollment numbers at the, at all of our schools. But I picked these particular five out, um, because they're the ones that, um, are troubled. The, um, the enrollment in these five schools, all of them except for Carver Heights currently, are at a rate of a hundred and twelve percent, a hundred and ten percent, a hundred and seven, and a hundred and fifteen. We passed a board policy that would, uh, any school that was ninety, uh, would be, have students added to it. And any, uh, uh, school that was a hundred and five percent would have students taken from it. All right, so out of these five schools that are troubled, four of them are well beyond the hundred and five percent in population, which we clearly saw that when we went to Brogdon, uh, Primary, okay? But what stands out and jumps out and has not been mentioned and not been offered in any of your reports, Dr. Lewis, is the fact that Carver Heights Elementary is currently populated at only seventy-two percent of its capacity. By information you gave me, that school has a capacity of five hundred and eighty-six students. So if you extrapolate that it's twenty-eight percent under capacity currently as we speak, then it has a hundred and sixty-four seats in it. Um, if you take your number of twenty students to a classroom, uh, that's eight classrooms. Now, the thing that just rises to the top for me, and I keep asking this question. Brogdon Primary and Carver Heights Elementary, those two districts join one another. So why wouldn't, since how the Board of Education has give a clear mandate to the administration, I think a year ago, we voted to look at and be about the process of adjusting this, school district lines. We passed a policy, a ninety, a hundred and five percent policy. So looking at these clear numbers that you gave me, why wouldn't somebody in the administration come and say, let's looking at moving those district lines between Brogdon Primary and Carver Heights because they join one another? And use that, that spare capacity we got for some of these classrooms that you say that we need?
The reason that I did not bring you an option like that is because in looking at next year's projected enrollments, Carver Heights is expected to hit the mid-eighties.
I, I have those numbers too. You gave them to me.
Yes, sir. So as I, as I look ahead and try to project, one of the, go ahead, sir.
If you, if you take the numbers that you gave me, Carver Heights next year, best case scenario. Now, this is figuring that all of those students that are currently out of district will go back to Carver Heights. It's only eighty-four percent, which is still less than the ninety percent. And at, at ninety, um, at eighty-four percent, that means it would still be sixteen percent underpopulated. If you extrapolate that, that's ninety-four seats available, divide that by twenty students, which is, that's still four point seven classrooms that's between those districts that are available. I rest my case. I mean, I've hammered on this for years now, but I just rest my case. I mean, the numbers are the numbers. We got capacity at Carver Heights. We're blowed up out there at Brogdon Primary. Why don't we move a district line?
What I've, what I've tried to do is look at the impact down the line of the moratorium on student transfers. And I do believe that over time, Carver Heights will repopulate itself to a hundred percent or more. And I'm basing that not only on next year's projections, but look at what's coming behind it that's already enrolled in North Drive. I've mentioned before that North Drive had an unusually large kindergarten class this current year, around two hundred and twenty kindergartners. Typically, there are, there have been about two hundred kids, I think it was a hundred and ninety-eight, who reside in the central attendance area. So as I do the math and try to project out what it might look like a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, I believe both Carver Heights and Dillard are going to repopulate themselves over time.
Well, right in the middle of this is Meadow Lane. Right in the middle of this group of, of, um, of schools here that are troubled is Meadow Lane. And obviously, we're, uh, I, I didn't even calculate that into the equation here, but we're going to have some additional capacity at that school. Those are my thoughts, board members.
Dr. Lewis, what, on a co-talk classroom, what's, what's the classroom size? What's the number of kids?
You would have, I would, if I were the principal, co-teaching, I would try to make sure that I had two small classes, same grade level with two teachers. In other words, rather than having, you know, two first grade classes with twenty apiece in them and having forty kids, I might create two classrooms that had fifteen or sixteen apiece, even if I had to put twenty-one or twenty-two in my single teacher classrooms to get those numbers down so that I ended up with thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three in a single room with two certified teachers. That would be co-teaching.
And with co-teaching, there's going to come the expense of professional development, teachers who aren't.
I would assume we would want to do something to try to be as good at that as they can. Uh, the other thing that we did not mention in, with these options, you can see on the summary document that I provided, not only the additional cost in teachers, but also an estimated cost of equipment and supplies. Now, I will tell you upfront, I tried to estimate a little high on that. Uh, I feel like that there will probably be some of these materials and supplies that are already in existence in the buildings. But without knowing for sure, I wanted to present finance with sort of a worst-case scenario. If we come in under budget, that's great.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to know, how did you come across, how did you come up with your estimate of cost of additional teachers? Because as I look at option two, you're saying four teachers, but you're only saying sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's only seventeen thousand dollars a teacher.
Take a, uh, no, sir. Take a look back at option one for me. If you look back at page one, which is option one, we had already said that those nine or ten positions could be absorbed in the special allotment that Mr. Hayes got, okay? So what I started doing for option two is take those off the top. And so, for example, at Brogdon Primary in option one, we can cover all three teachers with that special appropriation from the state. If we carry over to option two, I need one more than what the state is going to cover from those enhancement, uh, positions. If I go to option three, then I'm going to need three more than the state is going to cover. Does that makes, does that help you? So that, so the cost per teacher is still figured at sixty-eight thousand dollars. I actually think that might be a. so the cost per teacher still figured at $68,000, I actually think that might be a little bit low because the General Assembly is starting to come, starting to talk about some significant pay raises on average for teachers, and we won't know until we actually see who it is. But $68,000 may end up being a little bit low. But does that make sense in where the numbers came from?
Okay.
Okay. The, the three, maybe a better one to look at. Let me see if I can find you a better example.
And if this $68,000 is that, that's with benefits and everything included?
Salary and benefits.
What would, what would a salary, just salary alone be for that individual?
Gosh, I don't know.
Maybe...
Thirty something?
Uh, it's more. It's probably close to 50. You know, somewhere mid forties to fifty. The benefits add about 25%, you know, for retirement and taxes and then insurance.
And the state's projecting a 20-year teacher is gonna go to 52. So that is gonna be a significant, depending on the years of service the teacher system affect.
Yeah. And that's what, that's one of the concerns I have is particularly with these low-performance schools, we need to be making sure that we are looking at enough to cover a veteran teacher being once that we would want to go in there instead of new, beginning teachers.
Well, if he says that in option two, Brogdon Primary would really be paying for one additional teacher because the others are covered. So if it's, if it would be 52, is 68 with the benefits, will it cover it?
Well, it, it covers it based on what we know today. Now, once all the raises and everything are settled, you know, we'll have to pay based on the scale, you know, with that experience.
And I know this is a discussion about numbers, and I, I get it. But what's missing in this entire discussion is why we're having it. We're having it because these are low-performing schools. We wanna talk about numbers. Let's talk about those numbers. Because at the end of the day, whatever investment that we need to make in ensuring that our children have the best education possible, that's whatever, that's what it's gonna cost. And I, and I get it, you know, I understand the numbers, and, you know, people wanna be fiscally conservative or whatever. But when it comes to children, that's not a time, in my humble opinion, to be conservative. We've got some issues in the school system that have to be addressed. And we're, we're squabbling about how much it's gonna cost. Well, so be it. We, we're spending million dollars, millions of dollars on other things that have nothing to do with actual education. To be honest with you, brick and mortar has very little to do with education. Most people I know get education right now, they get it online. Have, you know, you don't need a building per se to get an education. So my, my concern is what is not being said in this conversation. The other thing that's not being said, you know, we act just like School Street disappeared, doesn't exist anymore. Well, it does exist. We toured School Street along with the county commissioners. And I understand that we have pre-K there, and I don't want to lose pre-K. I know that there are some people who are very passionate about pre-K, and so am I. But that, that's a space, and we're, that's not part of this equation. You know, so I'm, I'm concerned about what we're not saying, just as I am of what we are saying. You know, and, and I really believe that we, we really need to bear witness to the reality of why we're doing this. We are doing this because these are low-performing schools. And we are in the business of education, not facility management. I know it's part of it, but our primary goal is education. So with that being said, you know, I'm, 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 I'm very, I'm very much in favor of making whatever compromise needs to be made in order to make the numbers work. But at the same time, let's talk about why we're doing it. It's not just to get conservative-minded people upset, it's to get something done about the schools.
I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we, um, exercise option one in the upcoming school year. Um, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would like to say that obviously, this is something complicated, and a lot of work needs to be done in a lot of different areas. We do have Meadow Lane School that hopefully within the timeframe of the next year will be completed, and we can calculate all those numbers in it. And this will put us one year ahead of the state. We will get, hopefully, a better feel of exactly what the state's gonna do. I will say, I certainly sympathize with Mr. Smith's mindset. He stated it well one time, we, at last count, we got about $5 million, I think, in fund balance for emergencies. But what greater emergency is there than when having failing schools? That is an emergency. I believe that, I consider myself to be conservative, but I believe that your children are something that when I'm making investment in them, I'm making an investment in my own future, 'cause they're the ones gonna look after me in my declining years. So, and as well as themselves. Obviously, what we want them to do is be able to get a job and not be a burden on society. So that's my motion, and it's been seconded. And my comments.
All good. You have a comment?
Yes, I have a comment. Well, I, I do appreciate where you're coming from, Mr. Flowers. I think that we can do more than option one. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm ready, I'm, I stand ready to vote on the motion, but I believe that we can do better than that.
Okay. That is good.
All in, any other comments? All right, we're ready for the vote. All in favor of option one, indicate by sure raising your right hand. Those in favor of option, oh, I'm sorry.
Opposed.
Opposed. So option one is?
It failed.
It failed. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt option two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Okay. I think that was a five-one. All right, option two is it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, moving forward with the ones that were added on there, I have Dr. Harrow up here for any specific discussions. As we go through these, what you have listed is G, the Southern Wayne Project. If board members at your pleasure will look at the detailed report, we have six items up there. As we went through with the Facilities Committee, one of the things that we discussed was looking at the Charles B. Acoch Gym and the Rosewood Gym, the cost of those projects when they were built, and what they would cost at today's square footage plan. So if you look at the comparable costs, you will see what they would cost in today's bidding process of what we're going through. With the Southern Wayne Project for that gym, which was option number two on your listing there, what we are asking, we are meeting later this week with the county to finalize the funding. But I am asking the board if, with the board's approval, that we be permitted to move forward to go out to bid once we meet with the county and get the funding in order. We wanna be able, once we cut the trees down and do the logging as soon as school's out, that we're rated, ready and have the bid process in and be able to reward, award that contract.
Dr. Dunsmore, um, my understanding is that what the Facilities Committee was gonna move forward to was that we were actually gonna ask for bids on the classrooms as well as the gym, separate bids.
Yes.
So that we would have hard numbers to go to the commission with. That was my understanding, recommendation out of Facilities to, that's the way you understood it, Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
So the classrooms would be asked, submitted out for bids on a separate bid?
Yes, sir. That, the classroom, the aerial view is added, that is the last item on those lists in board docs.
And I've had discussions, as we discussed the classrooms, and I'd like to personally thank our Facilities Committee, our County Commissioners Facilities Committee, our Advisory Council members at Southern Wayne High School, as well as Principal Kevin Smith. We had two meetings. We met March 19th, and we met May 14th and had a great discussion from both our parents, our commissioners who were there, as well as our facility members there. So we, we felt really good about option two. That gymnasium is very comparable to Charles B. Acoch. There's only two square foot or feet different between the two buildings. The classroom addition space that you see there, being a former student there, teacher, coach, as well as assistant principal and principal, and speaking with Mr. Smith, one of the areas, as we walked around the building for Southern Wayne High School and looked at the potential of adding on to the older addition area, as well as the 1992 addition area that was added, Mr. Smith expressed some of the same opportunities that I did when I was there. Cafeteria currently has five exit doors. And our feeling was that as we looked at putting out a bid for classroom space, we would address some safety concerns as well as some access concerns. Because as you're aware, Southern Wayne, folks, that campus is made up of several buildings that are not connected. So we felt pretty strongly that that aerial view that you're looking at there would be an area that we would look at to add additional classrooms that could eliminate those access points of cafeteria, as well as make a secure courtyard for students that are, would like to eat lunch or have some kind of assembly outside.
As a member, I graduated from Southern Wayne, Mr. West did too, and maybe Mr. Henderson. But anyway, I think the location recommendation for the classroom is an excellent idea. Dr. Harrow, you or architect, whoever come up with it, I think that's an excellent idea. I can't imagine any kind of way that we couldn't accomplish security issues, the courtyard being much more secure, as well as the additional classroom, it be attached to the other building. I, I'm very much happy about that location.
Happy to answer any questions that you, you may have.
So what is the recommendation, and is it coming from committee or staff here?
Yes, sir. The recommend, all these items came from committee, from Facilities Committee.
Right. But on the agenda, the only, the recommend, the, the action shown is just action. It doesn't say what the recommendation is.
As chairman of the committee, the recommendation, I put in the form of a motion, that we proceed with getting bids on the additional classroom and the gymnasium as presented at Southern Wayne High School.
Listen, uh, all, if you will amend your motion, if I can amend your motion, or if you could just add on that we would like for that bidding process to be no longer than six weeks, and that a part of that bid process would also include an estimated timeframe from any contractors that bid on that project.
Mr. Chair, is that doable?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm in my motion to, for those requirements.
And I will second the motion.
Okay. Then we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Are we ready for the vote? All in favor? Uh, show by, indicate by raising your right hand. You don't have to stand this way. You can jump.
My hand's over.
Yes. Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay.
Moving along, Madam Chairman, the second issue is the air conditioning for the ag and auto shop up in Charles B. Acoch. Coming out of the Facilities Committee, I commend Dr. Harrow and Mr. Salz and the crew. They located some present air conditioning units on modular classrooms that we are not using, that are in good working order, that our folks can get up there very quickly, get them on, and get them running. So it's, for la, I guess Dr. Harrow jumped in there, but other than our already incurred labor costs, we can do this really quickly and probably for nothing.
Sir, we have two mobile units that Mr. Salz has worked diligently hard to get disposed of. They're still sitting on campus at Spring Creek High School. They have three barred air conditioning units on those mobile units. So our motion out of Facilities was to move forward with removing those units, installing them at Charles B. Acoch High School in the agriculture shop, as well as the automotive shop. And then the committee gave Mr. Salz permission to go ahead and to dispose of those two mobile units as in a way feasible.
As a recommendation.
As a recommendation.
And I submit that as a motion.
Do they have to be declared surplus before you can get them?
No.
And they're not?
They're not surplus.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, we're ready.
Did you, did you get the motion, Phillips?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Was your question, do the mobile units have to be declared surplus? So, oh, is that part of the motion?
To get, go ahead and get rid of?
Yeah, make that a separate motion and declare them surplus.
They have to be declared.
Yeah, they'd have to be surplus.
They have?
Okay.
They, they have already been declared?
They're two years.
We're just taking some parts. That's all.
So we would like to dispose of them and then repurpose those air conditioning units.
All right. Mrs. Phillips, Mrs. Evans, would you please reread the motion to the best of your ability?
I have Mr. Flowers made a motion to use the AC units from the mobile units at Charles B. Acoch. For the AC units to be, what's it, when I missed?
They should have been from Spring Creek to go to Charles B. Acoch.
They're currently at Spring Creek.
The mobiles.
Yeah. They're, the mobiles are at Spring Creek.
We're just gonna use the air conditioning units off of them and move them to CBAcoch. So that we can not.
And allow, and allow, allow Dean to get rid of.
Well, the motion is...
Ma'am, ma'am, may I make a, a shot at restating the motion?
Yes.
The motion is to remove three air conditioning units from mobile units at Spring Creek and move them to Acoch High School for the ag and auto shops, and dispose of the mobile units which have already been declared surplus.
All right. Second that motion.
All right. Any other discussion? If we're ready for the vote, all in favor, show by raising your right hand. Okay. Any opposed? All right.
Madam Chairman, moving forward with the motion, letter I on the tennis courts.
Yes.
Mr. Salz presented to the committee a lot of information on bids for tennis courts at CPAcoch and Rosewood. And to break through all that, all that information is there. The committee asked that we bring to the full board the low bids is to do the work. The low bid for Charles B. Acoch was court one to repair the tennis courts in the amount of $46,698. And at Rosewood, the same court won, the amount of $46,981 with legal review of the contracts prior to their work being done.
So I'd like to make a motion that we do that.
Second.
Okay.
The motion is that we resurface the tennis courts at CBAcoch and Rosewood.
With the, with the vendors.
With the, with the lowest bid vendors at those stated amounts. And I move that we do it.
Subject to legal review.
Subject to legal review.
And the, just to be clear, the amount at Acoch is 16,000. Just to be clear, the amount at Acock is $16,563?
No.
No.
Forty-six thousand.
The amount at Acock is $46,698, and at Rosewood, $46,981. I'd like to get you hard copies as soon as we're done here. Mr. Schwartz, you can take...
I've got them. I was just trying to figure out which is which.
Okay.
So that's the difference in the proposals, one and two?
Well, it says proposal one, so sixteen thousand, that's for the lower courts. Sixteen, and the thirty thousand is for the upper courts.
Of course. They kind of did them separate, you know, putting it all together to get it all done.
All right.
What is the amount, I'm sorry, the amount for Rosewood?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, nine, eight, one.
You got it. Okay.
Okay, so we, is there more, any more discussion? We have the second. All right, all in favor? Indicate by raising your right hand.
Thank you, Board members. Madam Chairman, the next on the Agenda J are the bleachers at the Eastern Wayne High School. As we had presented to the Facilities Committee, the bleachers out there are unsafe. We're not allowing anybody on them at the present time. And the recommendation out of that committee was the motion to replace those bleachers as quickly as possible. The low bidder is learning environments at a price of $143,800. One forty-three, eight hundred.
Is that seat? Oh, that's not the one you accepted.
Learning environments was the lowest one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the replacement. The bid for the replacement of the bleachers at Eastern Wayne High School had a cost of $143,800 from learning environments.
I second.
All right. Any question or discussion?
What company was it?
Learning environment. It was the second one.
Learning environment.
Hundred and forty-three, eight hundred.
The removal and replacement of two banks of bleachers.
It says excluded. Is our maintenance or, we have electricians that can wire these. Are we going to do that in-house?
That would be what Mr. Brian told us, that the bid would only change if they had to put in extra, and I think we're...
Well, they put $5,000 allowance in.
Allowance.
But my question is, do we not have people in-house that can wire?
We should. Well, we need, once the bleachers are taken out and installed, because their concern was obviously electrical supply, because these will be motorized, and they will be ADA compliant. So she will lose a little bit of seating, but she'll still have capacity to seat all of her students. The current bleachers at Eastern Wayne High School, when our gentleman reviewed and looked at those, he was kind of surprised because the knee space between the bleachers are what you would put in an elementary school. Very, very close.
I guess my point is...
Unless we have to tear something down between locker rooms and that wall, we shouldn't be able to wire it.
Should be able to. Okay, because that's going to be a cost added to it.
If he takes the bleachers out, he'll know if we got added with power behind those ninety-seven-six bleachers.
And the $5,000 allowance added to that number still only brings it like to the next competing bid, really.
Her bleachers were the worst that we needed repaired.
Okay. All right, we have a first and a second. All right, we ready for the vote? All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand.
And this will need legal review?
Yes, with legal review of the contract. Thank you, Board members. Moving on, item K. After discussion with the Facilities Committee, it was the request that we move forward and accept the timber removal bid at Southern Wayne High and Spring Creek High School. We need to get that done as soon as the students are out of Southern Wayne, so we're prepared and ready to move forward with the new building.
Madam Chair, before we vote on that, I would like to ask permission to be recused from the bid on that end, that my family is in the timber business.
All right. That is exceptional. Okay, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid by...
Triangle East.
Triangle East in the amount of...
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand dollars for the timber bid at Southern Wayne High School and Spring Creek High.
With a request for overcut.
With a request for overcut.
Before you do that, you should pass a motion to recuse Mr. Flowers.
Oh, I have to give, okay. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right. I need a motion to recuse Mr. Flowers from the upcoming vote.
I make a motion to recuse Mr. Flowers from the vote.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. All right, thank you. Now I need a motion on, any opposed? Now I need a motion to approve the timber bid for Southern Wayne High School and Spring Creek High.
I make a motion, we approve the bid.
Okay. You made the motion.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I do have a question, because I was actually sat in the Facilities Committee meeting, and we discussed this. And we, we had talked about, because we only got one bid. Out of all the bid notices we sent out, we only got one bid. I don't have a problem with this bid, but my point is, you know, we're going to pick and choose what we get three bids on, because we said we were going to get three bids, and we have in our policy, unless this is a single source, which is what I've heard for eight years, and it's not a single source. I mean, I'm just curious, did we go back and try to retain any other bids?
No, in Facilities, we had the discussion to look to put it out for rebid, and then I was asked to poll the board, and I polled the board, and the vote was not in favor of putting it back out.
When was that?
After we, remember, we adjourned Facilities, Ms. Strickland stepped out, and then we had a budget or finance meeting, then we read adjourned, and you sat in, in place of Ms. Strickland.
Exactly, and we, did we, that's what we said in there?
Yes.
No, I don't think that's what it, I don't think so.
Yes, yes, it was. We, because I remember making the motion that before we agreed to rebid it out, that needed to be an action that the full board needed to make, because that bid process had ended, and because of the mere fact that Mr. Dr. Harold had done some exhaustive research to try to get it, get companies to actually make a bid, and he couldn't get anybody. So that's when I made the motion in the Facilities meeting to poll the board to see if they were in favor of it.
We just need to be careful that we don't set a precedence that we do away with our three-bid system, because in my eight years of being on this board, there have been board members in the past, and some that sit on the board right now, that have been adamant that we get three bids. I mean, I don't have a problem. We're going to get one bid, let's get one bid. But, you know, we need to be consistent in what we're doing. This isn't a single source. That's all I've heard from some of the other things. Well, it's a single source. Okay, if it's a single source, you can only get one bid. This is...
But that, this is a sale, not a purchase. So that's what distinguishes. You're selling the timber, as opposed to a single source purchase.
So that's, so we didn't need but one bid to start with then?
Is there, Mr. West, idea what?
Is that fair? I mean, is that a fair practice, if we're selling something, only get one bid?
I don't think it was the fact that we just got one bid. He had exhausted everything he could. He actually allowed folks the opportunity to make a bid. They did not make a bid. So if we're going to sit here and do that, we might be waiting for summer, next summer, to get out three bids.
Well, we have had a debate by several of our board members about always having three bids, but we have approved a bid coming in, and we did not have three. And at the ti, and at times that we have gone back out for bids, what we've done is, we've ended up, we might pay less, but we also got less. And so I think there's a concern of time and interest, and the fact that we had the opportunity to get, people had the opportunity to bid.
Yes.
And this money has been approved, this action, program has been approved, and we need to move forward. And I think that's what happened, and that's why the board stood behind the bid that came in.
I made the motion. I'm done with it. I just wanted to make that a point.
Mr. Schwartz, I do have a question. Once, once you receive bids and those bids are opened, is it then prudent to go back out for bids if you're not satisfied?
Yes, the board can always reject all the bids and rebid if they want to.
And then make, and the bids are made public?
Yes.
And we've done that before.
Yeah. And the basic question is, is the board getting a fair price for this, and have you made good faith, valiant efforts to try and make sure that you're getting good price? You've complied with any statutory requirements, and now the only question is, is the board getting, you know, a decent price for this? And do you think you can do a whole lot better if you went out and rebid or did a different method of sale? Or are you okay with what you got?
And those same companies are allowed to rebid, even though bids have been...
Yes.
You have, in your packet of information, you have a list of all the companies I contacted. So I either emailed, called directly, one person asked for me to mail the announcement to them. So it was about twenty-six companies, I believe, that I contacted.
Are we using the state list?
Yes, sir. So what I did was, I contacted the Forestry Service in Wayne County, and they provided me with the list of all of the forestry timber buyers, as well as forestry companies. And I went down that list and tried to look geographically at location, because there may be a buyer that's in the western part of the state that does not want to come to the eastern part. Then I made every attempt to contact those people.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, let's take the vote.
Can we have the motion repeated, please?
Yes.
This is on the timber?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. West made the motion to approval of the timber bid at Southern Wayne High School and Spring Creek High School to Triangle East at thirty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, wasn't there something about over?
With an overcut.
With an overcut?
With an overcut.
Okay, all right. All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board members. Lastly, on that list then is item L. In discussion with the project at Northwest Elementary, the additional classrooms, that we have board approval to allow pinnacle architects, our engineers, to put that out to bid, so we can get that project started as quickly as possible.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and allow, open the addition at Northwest Elementary, open that process for the bid.
And I second.
All right. Any discussion?
Have we seen, I mean, I've not seen the plans, have we got plans for it?
I have those tonight, if you'd like, if you'd like to take a look at them.
I just, it's scary.
It would be an addition of twelve classrooms, six on each of the outside wings at that school.
Okay.
About, you know, the whole board obviously didn't sit in on facilities, but just for the sake of the public and, and the board, there's a lot, that project and the project at Fremont Stars is kind of somewhat married. And obviously, started out, we were talking about like twenty-two classrooms at Fremont Stars, and then we came back with maybe additional classrooms at Northwest, which is very much overcrowded, and adjusting the classroom size at Fremont Stars. The Fremont Stars project is a little bit more complicated, and we just will need a little bit more time on it, but Dr. Harold is working on that diligently. So we'll come back with that after the fact.
Okay, now we need a vote to...
Approve the bid.
Approve the bid for our Northwest Elementary School, the classroom.
But to open the bidding process.
Open the bidding process for the classrooms at Northwest Elementary School. If there's no more discussion, and we're ready for the vote, all in favor of the motion, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Board members.
All right, now we, we need to go back, go to our consent.
Yes, ma'am.
Consent agenda. And I need a motion to approve A through B on the consent agenda.
A through what?
V.
V is invictor, right?
Mm-hmm, V is invictor.
So I'm moving.
I second.
All right. All in favor of approving, is there any discussion?
Oh, that's right, there's no discussion.
That's right.
Consent.
All right, so all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, any opposed? All right. Next in line would be our board member superintendent comments. And why don't I start with Mr. Henderson?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I would first like to say a very thank you to my fellow board members for something that we begin to see coming to fruition, and that's the gym at Southern Wayne, that it's been long, been requested and needed, and I think this board has taken an admirable step in going ahead and approving at least going out for bid on that. I would also like to say that during the past couple of weeks, we've had a lot of things coming up, graduations, awards nights, and all of that. And I have been impressed with our students, particularly their behaviors at graduation ceremonies. I think Ms. Ishi and I attended one together, and it's been wonderful. And I've just, I was talking to some of my principals today, and I told them to please remind all the students, that I said, to get their rest, but to be prepared when they come for the EOGs, because this is EOG time. So I'm looking forward to some good reports coming from the EOGs this year. Thank you, that's my contribution.
Mr. Pridgen?
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate it, Madam Chairman. I did want to mention something. I had kind of caught wind from some people on social media that, that our teachers had not had a supplement increase in their careers, and some of them were teaching over twenty years. We did have a increase about five or six years ago in our teacher supplement. It went from four and a half percent to six and a quarter. And there is a proposal on the table that with this year's budget, hopefully, that our county commissioners may approve another increase in our teacher supplement. So for the people and the rumors that are out there, that, you know, in the last twenty years, there's not been an increase in Wayne County supplement, that is not true. I noticed in the audience tonight, we had two previous superintendents with us tonight, Jimmy Williams and also Darren Flowers. It was good to see both of them being here. I had a concern, I noticed that, I know we used to have people signing in when they came into the central office and getting visitors passed, and I know we do that at a lot of our schools, but I've been very concerned that that practice is not being done here in this building anymore. And... And, um, I can see that that can open up a security, uh, problem, and I just wanted to mention that. I hope we can go back to the old system of what we were doing, um, because it, it could be very easily for somebody to come into this building and not go where they say they're going, and, uh, end up hiding out and then being in this building after it's closed. And, um, so I did want to mention that, 'cause we'd had a couple of meetings that I'd attended, and I'd noticed that at the front. Um, the, uh, other thing is, uh, the, I, I thought we had a, I know we don't normally comment about people coming in here, but, uh, we had, we had a teacher, a, a person talk about the, um, the, uh, health occupations and CNA certification at Southern Wayne tonight. And I, I tend to agree with them. Um, there's a lot of students that may not be able to be reached, um, if that program were cut, um, and may not have the transportation issues, and I'm gonna tell you, I would much rather us be educating someone than working out in public, and having a career that they can make out of something they learned in this high school setting, uh, rather than not being able to do that. And I think as a taxpayer, we all would like to see people be productive in, in society, and we would like to see, I'd like to see that continue, but, um, I, I didn't realize that it was possibly on the chopping block either.
I didn't either.
So, anyway, I just, I just mentioned that. Um, the, uh, we had some wonderful board spotlights tonight, and, uh, it's always a pleasure this time of the year to see the, the teachers that we have that excel, um, that, that rise to the top, and the, uh, also the principals, Assistant Principals of the Year. Um, those banquets were, um, um, very interesting. We had, especially the, uh, the, the Teacher of the Year, uh, she was so excited.
I haven't been to季节, yes.
I don't think I've ever seen that much excitement in someone before in my life, but anyway, uh, and she was equally excited tonight, and, and wow, the, uh, Anna Weeks, the Duke Tip Program, absolutely phenomenal, uh, that we, seems like every year we have students that qualify for that, and then the Air Force Academy appointment I thought was, was wonderful as well, and, and we've, we've got some, we're doing some good things in Wayne County, and I hope we continue to do that. And that's all the comments I have.
Mr. West?
I don't have any comments, Madam Chair.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, I too want to, um, um, say that I'm excited about the possibility of the Southern Wayne project. Um, Southern Wayne is, is where I graduated from high school, and, um, so obviously, you know, it's important to me. Um, but I did want to say, uh, Dr. Lewis, he's always giving me numbers, and then I take him and beat him, beat him up with him, but, uh, he's good with that. Uh, but anyway, Southern Wayne, the projected numbers for Southern Wayne next year are eleven hundred and forty-eight students, which is ninety-four percent of its capacity. CBA COC, the projected numbers are twelve hundred and nineteen students, which is also ninety-four percent of its capacity. So Southern Wayne is, um, if those numbers, uh, those projected numbers for the next year are real, become real, uh, what is that, about, um, fifty, seventy students, um, less than CBA COC? And we, we built a new gym, a second auxiliary gym at CBA COC, I think it was in two thousand and one, because we did it when I was on the Board of Commissioners. So just those numbers certainly give credits to the fact that they need some additional space, and the classrooms, obviously, uh, the Board of Commissioners, like myself, are, uh, interested in getting rid of, uh, mobile and modular units whenever possible and replacing them with actually classroom. I think we've got an excellent plan down there. I asked the Board of Commissioners to get on board and help us, and, um, we arranged what fundings we have in such a fashion as we can move ahead with that project, because it is, uh, uh, it is justified. And, and furthermore, I don't wanna oversell the issue, uh, that end of the county, uh, is the demographic information, the southeast end of the county is staged to grow more now than other parts of the county. Um, we have currently, uh, two overpasses being built right there by Southern Wayne, uh, on one side, and that is in preparation of making that an interstate, um, standard highway, and we all know that interstates bring more people and, and all of that, so, um, anyway, it's a worthy project, and, and I hope we can, uh, get it completed. I was delighted to see Mayor Joe Scott here tonight. Mayor Scott is actually a cousin of mine, um, and, um, former, uh, principal Jimmy Williams. Uh, Mr. Williams, um, was my principal at Southern Wayne, and, uh, I think maybe it was in my junior, senior year, along about that time, which would've been sixty-eight, sixty-nine, I, uh, but he was, he was my principal, and he actually looks quite a bit younger than me, uh, but he's not. And, uh, I always tell him that, because he, he didn't ever work any, and I always did, so, uh, but he, he's, he's a great supporter and a great, been a great influence in our community down there, and I salute him and appreciate him coming tonight. And those are my comments, Madam Chair.
All right, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I too would like to echo the sentiments with regard to, uh, the tremendous accomplishments of the individuals who received boards, uh, spotlight tonight, especially the, the young people, they, they never cease to amaze me. Um, very proud of our students here in Wayne County Public Schools, and the staff and, uh, administrators who work with them on a daily basis. I'm also very proud of the educators that received their awards tonight. Um, educators, in my opinion, are the greatest asset that a student can have. It's not a computer, it's not a book, it's not a laptop, it's a teacher. That's the most important asset, that's the greatest asset to a student. Um, and having said that, again, I'd like to reiterate the fact that, as we talk about our fiscal conservatism and our particular ideas about how we think things, uh, should be and how money should be spent, let's never lose sight of what this is about. This is about the children. This is about the young people who's responsible, who we are responsible for educating. These are the young people that we're sending out into the world, and they're gonna say, people are gonna say, "Where you from? I'm from Goldsboro, I'm from Wayne County, I'm from Mount Olive." Uh, we need, we need them to be able to be proud to say that. And, um, I know I'm proud to say I'm from Goldsboro, uh, and I'm from Wayne County, and I, and I want them to be able to do the same. So let's not ever lose sight on why we are doing what we're doing, and, and, and get into, um, um, discussions that have nothing to do with education. Uh, I know those things are necessary. But lastly, I'd like to thank the staff, as I always do. You guys do a great job, I appreciate what you're bringing to the table. Um, you take a lot of hits, and, um, that's, that's, uh, that shows that you, that you're resilient, and I really appreciate what you bring to the table. And that's my comments.
Superintendent, Doctor Deswold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I too want to congratulate all the students, all the staff. I've been saying since I got here, we got great staff, we got great students. Um, I'm extremely proud of what they've accomplished, and, uh, uh, there's a lot of great things going on in our schools above and beyond what we bring in front of the board. And again, thanks to my staff and everybody that's here in the audience that supports us day in, day out, and works tirelessly, so thank you, I do appreciate it.
Okay. I think everything that has been said, I, I can second that. I appreciate, um, the spotlights that we did tonight, our students and our staff, and I think that with the end of the year, we get to see all of the work that has been accomplished by our staff members, uh, and our employees, and the students, and their parents. And so congratulations for all of the efforts that have been put in. I really, really do appreciate the fact that the leadership team, along with the superintendent, has come together to present to us tonight some options, some possible options, that we can do, that we can, um, examine, and then we approved option to, to move forward. So that is, um, that was my cup of tea tonight, in a cold rainy day. So, thank you very much for all that you do. And I need a motion to adjourn.
You're new.
Sir.
I'm sure there's no discussion, all in, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. And there are no opposes.